Check Podcasts.
The Bread and Butter Collective is a collection of hospitality professionals working together to help strengthen our industry to build strong culture, community, and sustainability.
I'm Kalen McNeil.
And I'm Sam Jones.
And this is the Bread and Butter Podcast. Welcome to the Bread and Butter Collective Podcast. How are you, Sam?
Kalen, I'm fantastic. How are you doing today?
I'm doing well.
Did you have a nice weekend?
Uh, I helped my in-laws unpack stuff. They moved into a new house. Um, they sold, they had a property on, um, Sprout Lake.
Oh, yeah.
That they sold and kind of downsizing and yeah, so I went up there and I don't usually like to move things, but.
But you were being helpful for other people.
I was being helpful.
Great weekend.
Despite what others may say, that was helpful.
I wouldn't say anything. I think you're always helpful.
Well.
You've always helped me.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, for sure. And now we're sitting beside each other.
I know. Those are really weird, like.
I know. You're actually sitting in my chair and I'm, I'm like, I'm okay with it, I think.
Well, it was warm enough. You kept it at a perfect temperature for me. Thank you.
Um, well, we're super pumped to have our first guest of our poll podcasts here.
I know, in-house guest.
And I would like to welcome Krista Lauten. Um, she's currently running as a candidate in the Victoria 2022 Civic Elect- Civic Election. Full disclosure, Krista and I are business partners in a documentary filmmaking company. Um, I met Krista, I don't know how many years ago, 14 years ago, when she's working on her first film, Us and Them. Uh, yeah. And then she's, you know, we started working together on her follow-up film from that. And she has a, a great knowledge base on what's going on in our city. We've got a homelessness crisis. We've got a drug opioid crisis. You know, I think there's 200 people a month dying in B C from it. So it's not just a Victoria issue. It's a provincial issue. It's a national issue. It's an international issue. So I think a lot of the issues that we face in our city, we view it as a vacuum, like it's a direct relation to lack of leadership here. And I would go as far as saying it's a lack of leadership across the board, not just.
It is. This isn't a Victoria problem necessarily.
No, 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 no.
This is a, this is a global issue.
It's a global, well, it's, it's actually not totally global because Europe seems to have a handle on it. There's other municipalities that do have a handle on it. And you know, obviously Krista has a lot of experience in that. But yeah, so I'm, I'm an advocate for Krista. I'm a supporter of Krista. I've worked with her and been business partners with her for a number of years now. And, um, yeah, I think, you know, for my personal, you know, just disclosing my personal biases, I believe that we need a city council that has a lot of, uh, smart people on there, but people from a variety of different backgrounds and experience.
Right.
Um, so when these topics come up on the best ways that the city can, can help facilitate, and a lot of that is advocating to the province and the feds as well, because a lot of these issues, um, to be really fixed, require provincial and federal funding.
Well, yeah, they're not all, yeah, the, all, all these issues can't be solved by one municipal government.
No, of course not.
It's not the mandate. They don't have the power to, to just wave a magic wand, right?
It's affecting how, yeah, it's affecting how, um, people view our city, like the quality of life in our city. But it's also human beings that are basically living on the street, um, with, you know, trauma, severe mental health, um, drug addiction, like these are human beings, right?
And there's real, there's real good reasons why they're there.
A hundred percent. And in my personal opinion, and this is all just my personal opinion, it is just a lack of, a will and lack of leadership on this, you know, and other priorities get mixed in and there's advocacy and there's, uh, you know, a policing, um, component to it. Um, a lot of, you know, polarizing on either side where they're like, oh, it's a policing problem. The police need a crackdown. And it's not going to be solved by police. It's just like, it's not going to be solved by the healthcare people. Like right now, the people that take the brunt of it, um, our police and our hospital, emergency care workers, x-ray techs, my partner is an x-ray tech, and some of the abuse and all that, and it just funneled in and then they just get kicked back out on the street, back to where they're living and doing the same thing, wash, rinse and repeat. So you cannot fix things by continuing doing the same things that got us here. Um, and I know Chris has got some great ideas and suggestions.
Yeah. And I think having Chris, who has such a, a, a background in the homeless, um, i- issues and the opioid crisis right now, I think it's really good timing to, to have her on and get in the, get, get in, in the form, current opinion about what's going on in Vancouver right now. What's going on with people on the street who are dying? I know, like on a personal note, my, my brother died through, through COVID, through the opioid crisis. And he'd been on the street for 30 years.
Wow.
Um, so I mean, this, this, this issue really touches everybody at some kind of level. And, um, I'm really looking forward to, to hearing what the potential future of Victoria looks like.
Yeah, absolutely. Krista, why don't you introduce yourself? Talk a little bit about your background and.
Well, as you've said, my name is Krista Lauten, like Broughton with an L. And I've lived in, I live in Fernwood. And I've been in Victoria for the last 17 years. I'm, was born in Brandon, Manitoba. I have a undergraduate specialist degree in geography. And then I moved into documentary filmmaking. So I've spent the last 15, 16 years working on the ground directly with people experiencing homelessness, addiction and mental health issues. And in my films, I tend to get quite close to the participants. So once you're a participant in my film, uh, you got me for life, basically is what happens. So yeah, I'm very passionate about that, but it's not the only issue I care about. And it also, the other thing about homelessness is it ripples out into other issues as well. So the housing crisis is a huge part of homelessness and that's affecting a lot of people living in, in Victoria. And.
It affects all levels too, because it's not, like the ability to get social housing, uh, low income housing, um, crisis housing is affected because of the price of land, the lack of housing. It's just, and it trickles people that are close to, um, being unhoused to the street. Right? So adding the population, adding to the population?
Yeah. So it's like, you know, the housing and creating the right kinds of housing and the right prices for housing, depending on your income level is on a continuum, you know, with the, the lowest being shelters and non-market housing and then into purpose-built rentals and getting into affordable buying and then up to single-family dwellings, which I guess is the ultimate. That is really unreachable for many people these days. You definitely have to have an income of over $85,000 minimum. You know, and that's probably not even enough, right? But you know, so we're looking at, I would say, people earning less than $20,000 a year up to $85,000. And what does that housing continuum look like? And how can we build on that? So people can be moving up that continuum to the pinnacle, right, of, of that single-family dwelling, which, um, you know, many millennials are just, it's just doesn't pencil, you know? And it's, uh, yeah, we have a lot of issues around that in Victoria right now.
Yeah, I've, I've got employees who, who, and I, I try to pay a good amount to my employees to make it so that they don't have to think about housing, but they do. Um, I've, I've got children who are thinking about and have had to leave Victoria to go find affordable housing and they're fully employable people. And I think that the housing issue is so multi-layered, it's gonna start to affect more and more and more people. It seemed like a couple of years ago, if you were to say there was a housing issue, you would automatically think of the people who already are, are homeless. But now, when you think about a housing issue, you think about all the construction workers who are having to move further and further away from their jobs, people moving out to suit, people having to move further past who can still commute to Victoria just so they can afford housing. And these people are fully employed.
Yeah, and always have been. And in the traditional sense are, are making enough money that they should be able to live in our city. And I think that, you know, a lot of people view, or I think, you know, when the rhetoric of the discussion, there's a lot of people that view this as just strictly trying to get people from tenting and, you know, looking at the most acute issues. But it ripples through the entire, um, community and especially in, you know, when it relates to the bread and butter collective and small business and hospitality industry in particular, we rely on, you know, a lot of, um, people, young people, primarily to work in our businesses. And, you know, we're obviously living wage advocates. And even that living wage is basically being able to live and pay rent and that kind of stuff. Doesn't necessarily address purchasing a home. And I think that, you know, people say, oh, it's not a right to live in Victoria. It's, but we cannot function as a community, or what kind of community would we be if we do not have a, a population of, of workers that can afford to live in our city, right? Restaurants close and we're basically just living in a, in a box store hell, in my view.
Well, and, and it, it has a dramatic effect on our economy for the reasons that you're saying. I read, uh, an article on the Chamber of Commerce, the Greater Victoria Chamber of Commerce website, talking about the right to housing because there are so many businesses that can't maintain staffing.
Yeah.
So.
Well, that goes to hospitals too, because hospitals can't keep workers. I know some of, um, uh, our friends that work in the hospital in, that left. So they, they moved and just taken jobs in other provinces where it's cheaper to live effectively, which, okay, so again, it's, you know, it's not everybody's right to live in a certain spot, right? But if we can't afford, can't provide affordable housing options, then we're literally, you know, all the other systems that, that go around a healthy community start cracking, right?
Communities die when the youth leave.
Yeah.
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 So it is a very serious issue. And, you know, my background is in working with the unhoused and creating impact documentaries to influence politicians to do things differently. That has been my role. Um, I've had great success with that. And, um, I, Us and Them screened on Parliament Hill. The current federal health minister was then the Minister of Families, Children and Social Development. So he had the homelessness file. And he hosted a screening there and I was able to meet ministers and, you know, visit Parliament Hill. I was in the, the parliament side of of the House of Commons. It was a wonderful experience. And because of that, it got a lot of attention from the United Way. So the United Way Sontre, Canada came on board as a sponsor to support me getting the film out across the country. So we did, you know, several hundred screenings across Canada and 80% of them were hosted by United Ways.
Wow. That's really great for them to be such supportive members.
It was an amazing experience. And, and with that, I also was able to tour across the country. So I met people in cities and towns all over Canada who are dealing with these exact same issues. And that was in 2017, 2018, 2019, in those, in that, the, that time period. And the housing crisis was already hitting everybody everywhere.
Yeah.
And it was, it's just how much I learned was incredible. And what I used to do is if I had a screening, say in Belleville, Ontario at 7:00 P M. And I'd arrived the night before, I'd go during the day and visit a shelter in that community and do a Facebook Live just to see, you know, what was happening on the ground and to give people who might be at the screening that night, a window into the day-to-day reality.
In their community.
In their own communities. And I just, I learned so much and it was, it was a, it was a great thing to do. Um, and then that's when we connected Kalen. Well, Kalen's like one of my best friends, who I guess we're full disclosure here, right? He's like one of my, yeah, we're tight.
We're tight.
Well, I feel like a third wheel all of a sudden.
You might be my brother soon too.
Oh, there we go. I think it's coming. It is coming.
But, um, Kalen and I were just sitting, you know, having a chat one day and he's like, whatever you do next, I want in. And I wanted to do a follow-up on Us and Them because Us and Them really shows the correlation between early childhood trauma and addiction and homelessness. So based on, are, are you familiar with the ACES, Adverse Childhood Experience Studies and the number?
Yeah. I'm not, are you?
So the number of adverse childhood experiences would predisposition people to addiction or homelessness. And the more you have, the more likely it is. And that's essentially what Us and Them does, right? It shows that people who have been severely abused and traumatized as children end up on the street. Um, Dr. Gabor Maté is in the film. So I, it was one of the, there's four participants. It spans over 10 years. And I didn't know, when I first started making it, it was, well, we're going to follow people into our place. So that's like in 2007, when our place opened, the, it was trans- transitional housing. So I wanted to follow people through that to see the process of once they got off the street, what that took, you know, what that took. But as I dove into it, oh my goodness, it was just, it suddenly morphed into my life. Um, I don't know how else to explain it. That film was and is my existence in that time. And I got so close to people. And then one of them sadly passed away. And I just felt like if I don't do something radical right now, my other three are going to go. I actually get kind of emotional just talking about this, to be honest with you. And so I went to Vancouver, to the downtown east side to interview Dr. Gabor Maté to find out what I could do to help my friends. And he turned it around on me and said, what's your experience of pain that you need to relieve it in the world? And then all of my childhood stuff came up on camera and the film moves in that direction. But we're able to show through that interview that we're the same. It's just that my homeless friends have suffered more than I. And then when I.
It goes to that scale of how many, how much trauma they suffered and what the outcome is where I think everybody has traumatic experiences.
And I think that's why Us and Them is so powerful is because the audience gets on my shoulders and they experience it with me. And everyone, when Maté is, you know, piercing a, I don't know, his psychological lens right through my being, everyone else is reflecting on what had happened to them in their childhoods. And then they start to realize, right?
The key thing for me, and the reason why I got so attached to it, was because of that connection to the reality of how close we all are. And there's elements of my childhood that could have led me in a certain way, if it was compounded with further trauma or if other decisions weren't made, or if, most of the time it's out of the children's total, all the time it's out of their control. What they experience. Um, and I found it so powerful that it allowed me to sort of kind of like, look, look at the homeless population and drug addiction and all those things completely different, right? It brings out the human component of it and how close everybody could, could be to that situation, given those cir- set of circumstances.
Yeah. And I'll just quickly note that Maté also said that all of his female patients on the downtown east side had been sexually abused as children and 95% of the men. And I remember all, like everybody. And I remember standing outside our place, you know, I would say maybe around 2008, when I was learning, when I met, because I found his book, In the Realm of Hungry Ghosts, right when it came out in 2008. It was the weirdest thing. Somebody at our place, a worker there mentioned it to me and I was like, I need that book. And I went straight to chapters, bought the last copy, went home and read it and went, oh, I get this now, right? It is, pain is at the root of this, right? And I was seeing that. But I didn't have all of the sort of medical or research to back that up, like, like Maté does in that book. And I remember learning about this and then talking to a group of friends, Eddie and, um, some of his friends, just unhoused people. And I told them about this and they all just, it was like dominoes falling. Like they didn't say a word. It was just like, you know, rubbing their foot on the street and looking down and kind of turning around, like, you know? Yeah.
Everybody.
Yeah. Yeah. So but the, the beautiful thing about Us and Them is then when I bring that back to the group, you know, the three that are left and I say to them, you know, I've, you know, I've experienced depression and I open up with them about it. And they're just so compassionate to me, you know, why didn't you tell us? And, and, and Donelda just so beautifully says, I say, but I, but I'm very cognizant of saying, but my pain isn't anything near what your pain is. And then Donelda turns it around and says, hell is hell. We all have our own versions of hell.
Yeah.
Yeah. Donella had some really good nuggets. And the one that sticks, and I think it was in the same sort of discussion where she says, you know, the light at the end of the tunnel isn't always a train. And, yeah.
Yeah. But sometimes it is. And that's.
Sometimes a train is barreling down on you hard and fast.
I don't mean to laugh about, but like these days, like there is some severe, like with the opioid crisis and the things that are going on, like we definitely need to do more. And I recognize that this is out of municipal jurisdiction, but if these situations are hap-
The people on the street are the citizens of Victoria.
Of Victoria. So if I'm a city councillor and my residents are suffering in this way, I'm going to go bang on the province's door and go, what the heck? Come on, guys. And I actually already have those connections at the province because of Us and Them. The, 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 um, social development and poverty reduction licensed Us and Them as staff training. So I have, I know people there. And that's what sort of sets me apart from other candidates is that this is all about relationships. You have to get people at the province and the federal level to listen to you.
Yeah.
And I've established those relationships. So.
Well, I think the, the count, it's, it would be naive not to, like, you can't disconnect the fact that there's citizens in trauma on our streets, which, I mean, the city of Victoria has a municipal police force. Um, policing is a component of that. So is, you know, enhancing the police supports to better deal with, uh, mental health crisis. And adding, you know, the social, uh, welfare component of it and, and counselling and, you know, the compassion, compassionate policing, so to speak. I think, you know, with the rhetoric that goes on down south about, you know, uh, defund the police and all this kind of BS. Is, I don't think anybody with good intentions is, is advocating to defund the police. I think for me, it's about enhancing their role and have the police deal with police issues and have, um, medical, uh, mental health professionals deal with medical and mental health crisis. And it's collaborative because some of, they cross lines sometimes, obviously, when someone's in severe crisis, they do crazy things. But, you know, the city councillors set the budget. Um, there's a lot of interaction on that end, you know, so there is some solutions there that the, you will, you know, if you get elected, have.
Can I jump in there with the defunding of the police? I think the police have been improperly funded to do things that they weren't ever meant to do. I, I don't believe in defunding the police necessarily, but what I do believe in is properly funding them and properly telling them what, what they shouldn't, shouldn't be doing with our healthcare victims. And I think that the majority of the people on the street are healthcare victims, more, more than police victims. Um, or, or.
The criminality of it.
Yeah, there is not a criminal part of this in my mind necessarily. It's far more of a mental health issue.
It's an issue of, I've heard from, um, just business people mostly downtown that, um, well, one person in particular, um, it's not an issue of public safety. It's an issue of housing. It's an issue of mental health. And the police have inherited that. And it's, it's not really fair actually to put that on the police.
Not at all.
And I don't think, like, I hear Del Matic talk about how stressed the police force is right now. 25% of our police officers are, have PTSD right now.
Oh, my God.
We need to have those pieces of the system in place where we do have housing, where we do have the mental health supports for people that are struggling. So the police aren't dealing with those calls, that the police would just be dealing with calls. Like if there's a crime or if there's a weapon, yes, we need the police. But if there's no crime, no weapon present, someone's having a, a mental health crisis downtown, we need other people to attend to that, which is actually happening. The PAC teams are, I think they should be on the street in the next month, the last I heard. There's also an organization called, um, Seaspring Mental Wellness Coalition that's doing mobile outreach to, um, for people in mental health crisis. And not just the homeless, by the way, just anyone. There's, there's a warm line that people can call and someone will come and just talk to you right at your house.
Wow.
So things like that. Also a 24/7 drop-in center for people in mental health crisis. And I would say even for, for people with addictions that are suffering mental health crisis, a 24/7 place where they can go to take that pressure off of the hospital. So part of my, my priorities on my platform, and you'll see it on my website, is to ease pressure on healthcare and police by providing these kind of mental health supports. But we are going to have to advocate to the province for that. We need the province to help support that.
Absolutely.
But you know, one thing to me that nobody seems to be talking about, which is the elephant in the room in my mind, is that we can have these PAC teams go out or we can have Seaspring go out and help people. But if they don't have a bed to sleep in at night, like, first things first. And what if that person is seemingly having a mental health crisis and we start saying, oh, we need forced institutionalization because this person is mental health crisis, but really what they're suffering from is extreme sleep deprivation. Which I think we're also seeing. I don't, I think we don't talk about sleep deprivation enough.
Well, it's a form of torture, right? So, I mean, that's the reality of it. It's sleep deprivation is a form of torture. So if people aren't feeling secure, they don't have a safe place to lay their head. And secure. The other thing about, imagine carrying a hundred percent of your belongings on your back every single day. And then being asked to move or, you know, go somewhere else or be, you know, subjugated to what I would call sort of stigmatization, obviously. And I get it. People are tired. I mean, our head office for Big Will Burger is on Ballmaral. And my business partners, you know, live upstairs and, you know, the criminal aspect of what ends up happening is a lot of desperation. So you know, they'll see something that they can pawn so they can get some money, either for drugs or to, you know, fend off, you know, whatever the threat is. And the threat is a lot of criminal, there is a criminal element.
Oh, a hundred, I'm not going to sugarcoat things.
No.
There is certainly a criminal element. And if an encampment moves into your neighborhood, it's going to be chaos.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna not talk about those things because that, that is part of it.
Yeah. But it's not caused by the criminal, like criminals could go where there's vulnerable people, right? And people at risk and people that they think they can take advantage of.
They prey upon.
Prey upon. So.
And the drug dealers themselves are probably preyed upon too, right? So they're just, they're just, um, disposable puppets for the big drug dealers that are pushing it through. And when things are all in one place, that becomes a monopoly.
And it's very easy to access.
And so one thing, when I'm a city councillor, if I'm a city councillor, if you vote for me, is I will look at.
I haven't made my decision on who I'm voting for.
Okay, that's okay. You know, I, you know what? I, uh, you know, I appreciate that. You're keeping your, an open mind, watching things.
You're gonna be, you'd be fantastic.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna do my best to get elected.
I'm gonna be on the other side. I'm gonna say, earn my vote.
Okay, I'm gonna earn your vote. So if I'm elected, I want us, this, the region to look at the homelessness or the public safety situation. I think public safety has become a dog whistle for homelessness. I mean, can we just talk about it, right? Let's just talk about it. Nobody wants to talk about it because everybody's sick of it. But you know what? It doesn't, there's still people every night that are going through this, right? It doesn't go away just because we get sick of it.
A regional issue.
So my, my point here is that it should be, uh, an issue of the CRD. We need to look at it from a regional perspective. So one thing I noticed the last couple of weeks, it was maybe two or three weeks ago, um, View Royal banned camping in 41 of 43 of their parks because it's not appropriate. But on the west shore, there's only one shelter and it's in Suk. So if people want to go to a shelter, um, View Royal said, go to Sanit or go to Victoria.
Not in my backyard.
And I say to View Royal, okay, okay, just a minute here, right? This is, this, and that's precisely why this needs to be treated as a regional issue. It has to be treated as a regional. It has to be treated as a regional issue and we have to knock on the, on the province's door and go, we need you to fund this.
Yeah.
Because this is outside of our budget of what we are able to do. And that is the role I would take on city council. So when you're talking about having different people with different skillsets, so I'm sort of paraphrasing you, but I think that's really important to vote for people that have different skillsets. I'm the one that will most definitely stick handle homelessness and addiction from a place where no other candidate has my experience.
Yeah.
And that'll weave into housing as well, right? So that is something that I'm doing a ton of research on right now. And community connection, like our communities need to be healthy. They need to be safe places. They need to be clean places. Like how do we pull the unhoused into that? And we see a wonderful example with the, the clean teams. I think it's the DVBA that does the little clean, so it's, you know, so more of that in more of our neighborhoods, like keeping, like we are a capital city. You know, and you look, I look down Pandora and go, what on earth is going on?
Right.
That's why I'm running. Like I, you know, it's like, there's a lot of reasons why I'm running. I still, like I care about housing. There's another piece about housing I really wanna talk about with our senior population, so don't let me forget that. But I wanna see livable, walkable neighborhoods where we're, you know, fifteen minutes away from locally grown fruit and vegetables where we can have community connection, where there's dog parks everywhere. We're talking to each other. We're coming out of our houses. We're experiencing each other. We're not spending all our time in cars, driving to the, the burbs and back. Like we need to make our communities functional in this little fifteen-minute radius. I think that's just a wonderful idea. But when it comes to dealing with homelessness, I, I will be the councillor that will take that to the hoop for Victoria.
I've got, I got three points. There are burning holes in my head now.
Okay, let's do it, let's do it, sorry.
So of, of the things you, you were just saying, one thing really bothered me about View, View Royal. They're, they're the municipality that gets all the tax money from the casino, yet they're not, so they're taking it all off the top, but they're not giving at the bottom. So right away, um, that, that doesn't sit very well with me and I just wanted to make that a comment. So thanks for bringing it up. Now I have something to.
It shocked me. Well, it shocked me. And I don't wanna be too, like, I don't wanna come at it.
Beating it up.
That's so much the problem is that you'll take huge amounts of money for, from something that some people would say is a real social issue. I know others might disagree, but I think that, I, I think that having that in your community while not supporting what, what becomes of some of those people is awful. And anyway, that, that was one thing I wanted to say.
Say though, View Royal, if you're listening, I'm not like, let's work together. Let's talk about this. Let's see what we can do together, right? I'm not, I'm not.
Opportunity.
I'm not coming at, I'm not gonna swing at, I'm not coming at any of this with anger. I'm coming at this with a, a practical way to connect, to work together and to find real solutions. And real solutions that work. It has to work. You know, I'm not just.
Everybody.
I'm not just.
Pawn off the problem to a different municipality. And even with the housing part, there's a limited amount of land. And with zoning, we, we'll get into the zoning issues in a bit, but um, you have a limited amount of land. You can't build certain forms of housing regardless of whether it's low income or co-op housing or any of that stuff. That is actually gonna be a solution to elevate people out. And Kool-Aid, well, Karen's a prime example. She was a participant in the film. She's now housed in a Kool-Aid facility in, in Callwood.
Yeah, she's in, yeah, Langford.
Oh, Langford, right?
Yeah.
But that's an example of, of, she lived on the downtown of Victoria for
Years.
Fifteen years or twenty years, right? And now she's living in a neighboring community. Um, so they're providing solutions and she's excelling and, you know, she's, she's, that's a prime example of someone who's been living on the street for a long time that's getting help. And not to, we can talk about Karen in a bit, but my point of it is.
Indigenous woman.
She's an indigenous woman and they're overrepresented in the pop, in the homeless population and drug population by, I think it's thirty percent when they make up five percent of the population.
Yeah, thirty per, thirty-three percent in the last point in time count. Um, and it's a half a percentage in Victoria, so five percent nationally.
Yes.
But it's point five percent in Victoria, but yet they make up thirty-three percent of the homeless population. So there's this major disproportionate number of indigenous people on our streets. And as an aside, not just it's in, it's jails and it's child welfare system as well. That's national, that's federal issues though.
My, my point was mainly about, Langford's provided solutions because there's land, they had the zoning, they were able to build, you know, support housing, supportive housing for people coming off the street.
Yeah, her particular one is for senior at-risk of.
At-risk seniors.
At-risk seniors, yeah.
Yeah, so basically with the entire region has a role to play in the solution, not just the city of Victoria.
Yeah, and when I, when you hear that, it's, come on, guys.
Yeah, well, it's, and Oak Bay too. I mean, when they, they had this, the Lodge, Oak Bay Lodge that was perfectly set up to, to house people temporarily in an emergency situation during COVID and the city council there said.
I think it was actually the CRD board.
CRD board that.
And because it, um, cause it was a hospital, right? It was a seniors home, so, and they put forward a motion to just explore having fifty homeless seniors, cause they could only do what it was set up to do, which was, it was a seniors home. So they put a motion forward for fifty homeless seniors and it didn't pass. In, during COVID, homeless seniors.
Yeah.
There was, I'm, the sec, the new film that I'm putting out right now is a, it's called Nine Forty Caledonia. It was a temporary encampment that was set up on the parking lot where Tiny Town is now. And there was three septuagenarians in that camp.
Wow.
And I know a guy, an, an old, like, well, older gentleman, def, probably in his early seventies, that was in an apartment a block away from Central Park and he was evicted when the eviction bans were lifted. And he didn't say anything to the landlord because he's too stoic and proud. And he just wandered over to the park and set up a tent. And the North Park Neighborhood Association went to bat for him, got to know him and at the, I don't, I'm not sure how, probably he must have spent about maybe less than six months, but that's enough for someone that age. And she went, the, the, the person who's stick handled that went back to the landlord and told them they had no idea. They ended up getting him back into his same apartment at the same rent. So it's just letting landlords know.
Well, I think that's, yes.
Or like pieces, like prevention. That's another thing I'm huge about is let's prevent these, these kinds of.
They become homeless and living on the streets.
And that's for that human being, life-changing to prevent it. And also it saves the system so much money.
Well, I think that per, at that age, like the outcomes are horrible, like living, living in cold temperatures, um, arthritic, their mental health.
And it's, and it, you know what? It's dangerous.
Yes, and dangerous.
Because there is the criminal element there. He's gonna be at risk to, you know, luckily he was, like other people protected him. There, it's, it's, it becomes a family in those.
I think it's a prime example of once the landlord is made aware of that, they've found a solution.
Yeah.
But you can't always expect the person that's suffering the crisis to um, have the ability to articulate what their needs are. Or even the, you know, when you bring in pride or ego or any of this, like, you know, embarrassment of their situation or whatever. They're not communicating properly.
And this person also wasn't collecting CPP, so the same woman from North Park got him on CPP, changed his life.
Yeah, I bet.
So it's, it's, one thing I've been told is one way to really help homelessness quickly and easily is to get to know each person and to find out, like if we, if we knew, where, where are your connections? What are you missing? What, are you a homeless senior that isn't on CPP? How can we get this for you? How can we? And so we need to know more information that goes beyond just the point in time count data, like demographic information. We need to know more about the individuals and it's actually a relatively inexpensive way to make a difference quite quickly.
Well, how, how, how do you start to get statistics on people who don't have an address or a phone number?
Well, they do point in time counts, so it's a, a group.
They literally go out to the street.
Yeah, on a twenty-four hour period and count people, but they're, they're, they're not accurate, cause it's very hard to find people.
Is that just counting or is that talking and finding out what, what their individual needs are?
No, it wouldn't be, it's finding out, you know, their age, where they're from, how long they've been homeless, um, if they identify as being indigenous. Male or like those, you know, the, the basic sort of census questions. It wouldn't be, what, what family connections do you have? Are you on CPP? Are you on social assistance? Are you, do you have a disability? Do you, like, those sort of deeper questions about that individual.
Is there privacy things that are stopping? Like I always, I, my impression.
Yeah.
I mean, I make judgments quickly, um, and based on, you know, some common sense logic, but did, I mean, I know in the last fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, privacy, people's privacy has really tightened. Where family members can't find out access of, like if I've got a family member that's in hospital, I can't find out anything from them unless it comes from the person that's in the hospital.
That's why I tracked all my family on my phone.
No, that's absolutely true. And, but in this case, it would be the person actually sharing that information. And, and I, I need to dig into researching that a little bit more, how that's been done in other places, but um, that's been one suggestion.
There's a way to, I'm just kind of, this is sort of an aside, but like that information's pretty valuable. Like the information that they're collecting is sure it's valuable, where the, like the basic census stuff.
We need that, cause we need, we need to know how many people are out there.
Like spending more time diving deeper and maybe it's five visits with them before they actually disclose some important information.
Precisely.
Which we can then actually, because this from my limited experience, even though I've been involved, you know, with Krista's journey for fifteen years, um, is it's really taking that one person, that elderly person that was evicted that didn't get CPP. It's taking them. It's Karen, like you.
My Karen, yeah.
Karen, you literally helped her save her life in a lot of ways. She did a lot, she did all the work.
A lot for herself as well, but I don't.
It took that tension.
It's hard to actually quantify what my friendship did for her. How do you, how do you measure that, right?
I think it's an example of, my point being, it is, is an example of literally taking this person's hand through certain processes or having an ability to do that. Whether it starts with the information collection and finding out why they're there, right? And then figuring out the best way, because Karen's indigenous. So indigenous people need a different type of treatment.
Hundred percent.
Then um, a settler population or Caucasian or Asian Canadian or Indo-Canadian or any of these people. The, you know.
Culture saves lives.
Yes.
So, I mean, as soon as she hears drumming or, you know, she's just right there. She's right there. She's, she's, she's a remarkable person. I, but she had me, right? So I might not have been down there on the street with her every day, but I was a phone call away for the last fifteen years. What, how does that, we'd have to ask her. We'd have to have her on this show to talk to her, but you know.
But okay, let's, let's, let's leave, you know, and I'd, I'd actually love to have Karen on too. I think that's.
Oh, she would love it.
Yeah, um, she'd be funny, very, she, her sense of humor is incredible. Um, but as, as kind of like the, the top level thirty thousand foot view of it, there's multiple examples of people that are taking active care of people that are on the street and assisting them in, like it's one-on-one. Like your relationship with Karen was one-on-one. The person that took the time to find that person in the park, that's an elderly, that is one-on-one, right?
It was, yes.
You can think of these big grand schemes that, you know, like Tiny Town and these big kind of projects. But it really comes down to having people boots on the ground, finding out information, stick handling it individually. I mean, if we have a homeless population of eight hundred people in southern Vancouverland, I don't know.
If, if, if we all just befriended one, you know, like, you know, cause there's probably like three, I would say, it's, we don't, again, there should have been a point in time count. The last one was done in twenty twenty. There should have been one this year, but it didn't happen. So we don't really know the numbers out there. I'm gonna guesstimate and say three hundred are sleeping rough every night in Victoria. But if three hundred of us just said, you know what, I'm just gonna be your friend. I mean, maybe that sounds too utopic. Now, of that three hundred, how many are the criminal element? How many are gonna work it so they get thing, like, I mean, all of that happens, like we have to be.
People are people.
People are people, so it's, um, that might be a bit of a utopic thing to say, but there are organizations like, um, and there's this group called NSUN, Neighborhood Solidarity with Unhoused Neighbors. And they befriend people and, and invite them to their meetings and do things to help support. There's a lot of outreach workers I know. Actually, this is how we could do it, cause there's two outreach workers I know that are right on the ground. So who are the ones that could really just use a friend that are safe, you know? This is, it's hard to talk about this, like, cause I don't want to, I wanna be honest about the types of, of, of people, but not everybody is dangerous. Like that's just not the case, right? But there, there might be something there. We'd have to be very careful, you know, but um, there, there might be something there.
Well, a, as you've traveled, um, promoting your movies and your points of view on this issue, you've got to meet lots of people from probably lots of different levels of government in many different towns. Is there a place or an organization that you think is really, has it just right? Like they're nailing their policy and it's working for them. Is there a town or an organization that you know of that?
Oh, good question.
Country, great question.
You know what? Good question.
I've been thinking about it for all hour.
I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you. It's called Homeward Bound and it is in Prince Albert, Saskatchewan.
Way to go, Prince Albert.
Prince Albert, Saskatchewan. And they bought, okay, so you know those apartment blocks that were a lot, so many of them were built in the sixties and seventies? When a whole bunch of stuff was purpose-built rentals were built here in Victoria. Um, a half of our stock is from that era.
Yeah.
Um, they bought or leased, they leased one of those buildings. So they just went to the landlord and said, I'll rent them all.
Yeah.
So it's three levels and it's all housing first, but it's run as housing first is supposed to be run. And I actually have never seen housing first work as it's supposed to work at any.
Well, that's a.
Of the, in Victoria, I just haven't seen it.
Yeah.
Because housing first is, it's you, if people are still using, you, they go inside, doesn't matter where you're at. But then once you get inside, there's support wrapped around you and the person.
So are you describing housing first?
Yes, the person.
That's the utopic version of it.
It's how it's supposed to work, but it, I never, there's no checks and balances to what service providers are doing.
Yeah.
Well, that's a, that's a provincial thing.
Yeah.
Um, but they're supposed, so the person, let's say Karen moved into this place straight from the street. It'd be Karen, do you wanna go to treatment? What kind of treatment do you need? Well, I'd like to do something. I'm native. I wanna do indigenous. So they would help facilitate what that client is asking for. And that, those outreach workers might be there every day for the first, until they stabilize, right? And then you graduate into another level. And then maybe those workers come in five times a week. You know, and they help you with stuff, help you clean your place. They help you buy groceries, all the basic things, like, you know, you move into apartment from the street and you've got nothing. Like where do you find your toaster?
Like when people are in trauma, like if you get into an accident, like I was in an accident, I was paralyzed, had to relearn how to walk. First thing I did or they, they assigned me was an occupational therapist. So I could relearn how to cook my meals, put on my clothes, assimilate back into a, a functioning, independent life. Uh, that's an example of someone who's suffered physical and had a brain injury and things, so, and mental issues, um, following the accident. So why are we not prioritizing that? We do that for, for, I don't even wanna, the, I don't know what to call the population that suffers, you know, sort of traditional injuries and setbacks in life, whether you're, you know, in a accident or um, you have a brain tumor or something that happens that disrupts your, your life. Um, there seems to be a lot more support for the people that, um, I don't wanna do it money because we're socialized healthcare. So peo- people have access to that. But where is, where is the access to those types of things for people that are having to, or wanting to move off the street into housing of some kind and then needing the supports?
Yeah, so that's what Homeward Bound did. So they, they completely supported people. There was an office, I think, on the third floor. It doesn't really matter, but there was an office there and communal rooms where people could go and there's, there's someone to talk to there for whatever they needed. On the second floor, or maybe it was the top floor, it's been a while since I've been there, but it was a floor just for women on the street who have children.
Right.
This is so important. The numbers were crazy, like it was almost every single homeless person in Prince Albert is indigenous. So it kept women and children together that would normally. So it kept women and children together that would normally go into the foster care system, kept them together and supported the woman and the child. Groundbreaking stuff going on there.
So how does a program like that not get recognized and, and duplicated?
I don't know. I mean, because we're not talking about it enough, I'm not sure. And the other crazy thing about it is the reason Karen was with me when we went there that day, because she lives, she's from Lelosh, Saskatchewan, way like six hundred kilometers north of Saskatoon. So we stopped in there. I'm like, I need to go here and meet these people because, you know, and she just came with me and she was just chilling out. And then her sister-in-law happened to be working there. It was the trippiest thing, like she just ran into her brother's, the mother of her brother's children, who was doing all the cultural support work at this place. So the sharing circles, the drumming, the, you know, really cool. Another great place is in, it was in Toronto, it's called Na May Res, and it was a men's, it was just for men. It's an indigenous, um, shelter and housing, and it was right in, you know, urban Toronto, and there was a sweat lodge right in the building and they took care of men, indigenous men that were, um, struggling on the street, a very amazing model, again, the drumming, the talking circles, all culturally sensitive. Um, just beautifully run, everything like their, their, their whole systems, like the, the executive director showed me like their board of directors, it was all in circles, right? And just all indigenous philosophy behind it. So, um, the indigenous communities have a really wonderful way of, of looking at things and, and supporting people.
Who need healing?
And I believe, yeah, and healing. Um, and I think that non-indigenous men could go there as well, but it was, it was based on indigenous principles. It saves lives, it just saves lives.
And so what, so, okay, so you, you've got two, two slightly different models.
Yeah.
That are happening, one, one in Saskatchewan, one in.
Toronto.
Toronto. And we've got hotels being taken over in Victoria.
Yeah.
And Vancouver. And I don't know the statistics, but I hear on the street, all, all you hear is, is, and this is, I'm sure wrong. But what you hear is these hotels are being trashed all the time. There's fires, and I'm sure there are some of this probably happens.
Yeah.
I, I don't want to believe that this is just the case always.
Like is it completely broken?
And why can't we use these other models and have them here? Why, why we got a model that feels like it's broken? And perpetuated, uh, like it feels like we're perpetuating what feels like a broken model. Where you're coming in, you, you, you want in on council, you've got these ideas, so how would you take these other models that feel like they're the same kind of thing, you know, you buy out a hotel and you put people in the hotel?
But it was so different because, um, I have, I know people that, one of the, 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 one of the participants in my film Nine Forty Caledonia is in one of those hotels, so I hear from her what happens there. As far as I can understand, essentially the service provider has, there's always a staff member there, but they're just at the desk, they're not working, um, with people, interacting with them day to day to help them get the things done that they need to get done. So there's no support workers working directly with the people. She doesn't, who I'm talking about, doesn't have any support, period. She's just, she's got a roof over her head. And she would actually be, rather be at Nine Forty Caledonia.
And the staff, you're talking about that, tho- those locations are just like basically hotel staff, they're not social service staff, they're not.
They are, they're, I think they're mostly there for se- for security, like, don't quote me on this, but it seems to me like if something goes incredibly wrong, then they would be able to call the police. There is a security guard there. But there, I think it would be also, we, we need to be fair to the system here. What I'm talking about is really expensive. Because like.
Well, it's manpower too, and we're in an employee crisis.
That too, right? So let's not be too, let's be, you know.
We need to be sympathetic for sure.
Hard on the problem and easy on the people. So I'm not trying to criticize service providers, I'm not trying to criticize BC Housing, but BC Housing will hire a service provider to manage these hotels and then basically it's hands-off. Like there's no, there's no going, like, you know, somebody coming in to do checks and balances, how's this working out? We just, there, there needs to be more staff there that's just working directly with the people to help them with their lives. And that doesn't, that doesn't exist. And then when there's issues at those hotels, because I know that another one of my participants was at a different hotel and he had issues where the police were called, right? Because the staff there, a lot of them were just young kids working for eighteen bucks an hour. Rather than having a twenty-four seven counselor there that could, could actually do some emotional regulation work on the spot. So that the, because the police are just gonna come in and stand there until he, because he's probably getting, you know, not like, eventually they'll get evicted, but first of all, they'll get twenty-four hour bars. Like if you, you know, punch a hole in the wall, that's instant twenty-four hours, you're out. And then if you don't want to go and it becomes, you know, that kind of thing, like it can, and then the police have to come in and try to stick handle that, which is like, this isn't a crime. There's no weapons, you know, we need other people in there to do restorative justice, to do emotional regulation, which is anger management. Um, I think in all of those hotels, there should be AA meetings and NA meetings every day, just in one of the rooms. Whether people show up or not, just have it there. So someone's walking by every day. Just more supports like that could really, really make a difference in, in those hotels. Um, some of the, the support workers, like the, there's the intensive case management teams have told me, there are certain people who have settled in the hotels, like, but there are others who have not. And any of the so-called hardest to house will have ended up back down on the block on Pandora, right? That have been evicted from the hotels. And one of my participants, I'm, I can mention his name, oh, should I?
Yeah, don't have to.
I don't, I'm not gonna, he said I could mention his name and talk about him, but I'm just gonna kind of leave it, but he, that happened to him. You know, he's a, his case is so complicated because he's a wonderful human being, but he has a, um, I don't mean, but he's a wonderful human being and he has a poly substance use disorder. So he's addicted to fentanyl and he's addicted to crystal meth. So the fentanyl, he's on safe supply, he's got patches, that's all cool, but the, when the cravings for meth or amphetamines come on once a month, all bets are off and he's a different person. He just changes into a completely different person that is.
Uncontrollable.
It's unmanageable. He's, so he's been, he got chased off the block by bullies and ended up at his mom's place over in Toa, or I'm not gonna say, over on the mainland. And, you know, she can handle him for three weeks of the month, and then she jokingly says, when you, when you get PMS, which is his amphetamines. Then it's, all bets are off and he, she, he can't be there because he, you know, and it's so tough right now. He's, I'm sure right now, it's check day on Wednesday, I'm sure he's, he's back in the downtown east side right now. I'm actually thinking about going over there on Thursday and going to find him. And just bringing him, I don't know what to do, like he needs his ICM team. So because it's health authority, like his ICM team is with him for life, but not if he's in a different region.
Yeah, that's right.
So it's really, and this guy is begging to, for, um, institutionalized treatment. You know, and we're having people talking about, we need forced institutionalization. Well, how about voluntary institutionalization to start with? He wants to heal and he has made it, you know, I've seen him go to detox six times. Couple of times he made it through and then went to stabilization. And then both times at stabilization, he didn't make it in stabilization because there's this thing called, I don't know what, I think he probably has ADHD too, that he is unmedicated for. And that's, I think, quite common, but is, he hasn't been off drugs for six months since he's been fifteen. So they can't treat him for that. So when he goes into stabilization, there's this pink cloud thing that has, is your brain is regulating. So there might be a whole bunch more dopamine kicked up in his brain and he's crazy. And then he disrupts everybody. And then.
Well, and I think everybody's at a different, different point too, right?
So, yeah, it's just so complicated. And I'm making a film about him to show people, like this is so complicated, like, um, and, and off he goes and he's, the, the, the pain that that individual has been through and how much he has to offer the world. He's incredibly intelligent. He's taught me so much about, about life on the street and he's the kind of person that I could say, hey, what about this idea as a solution? And he'll pick it apart and, and he helps me come up with stuff because unless we're bouncing it off the people with lived experience, we're gonna come up with, with things that don't work. And that's one thing I'm really serious about. If I'm on council and I'm putting some of these things forward to the, to the province, it has to be batted around with all stakeholders in it. So, you know, by, by law, police are gonna have to be part of that because they're the ones that are dealing with it on the day-to-day. You know, but we also need to talk to the, the advocates, the activists, we need to talk to people with lived experience. We need to talk to the ICMT workers, the service, everybody needs to be part of this conversation because what's happening right now isn't working for anybody. Nobody's happy.
Yeah, nobody's happy. Well, I think it creates that polarization and I think that's the biggest thing that I'm disappointed in our city about, um, and, you know, there's media influence and then there's, you know, the, the um, computer warriors that are chiming about, well, Twitter's a, a very toxic thing, but I love Twi- I love Twitter.
I know.
But I also know how to interact with it and I know, you know, you need a certain skillset. To do it, yeah, most people just get.
I've had a couple of moments on Twitter.
Yeah, they get, they get chewed up and spit out.
Yeah.
But it, there is, it is an example of, of the polarization where it can go. And then none of that is providing solutions, like I, there's a thing on Twitter this morning that I just, and I don't normally chime in, like I'll talk about certain things, ideas I have or, you know, things like that, or I may comment on stuff positivity. I'm about positivity.
Yeah, me too.
I'm not about the negativity of it, but this morning, there is an account, which is an anonymous account that has been railing and basically made a comment about the fact that that police officer that got hit. And there's a police officer that got hit by a car on Pandora Street.
Yes, I read, yes.
Almost killed.
Yes.
And he, his life is forever changed.
Yes.
And his only fault was being a police officer on Pandora Street and, you know, and then getting hit by a car. And then this anonymous Twitter account, which, you know, people will probably know which one it is, um, says, I don't care about that police officer getting nearly killed. And I'm just find that like obscene. And then, uh,
Yeah.
A media personality in town basically says that the incoming count, the, the potential population of people running for counselors, support that rhetoric. And would support, agree with that. And I just find, both are so offensive to me.
Okay, well, so that, both are offensive. Exactly. Both are offensive. We can't.
And it, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't produce anything positive, except it continues to polarize.
The media personality, we also need to remember, is pushed by their producers to keep it controversial, to keep people angry, because that's what keeps the phones lit up and you got this space to fill. We all in Victoria need to remember that, that's not reality.
Yes, well, neither side is reality.
Neither side is reality, yeah.
When it comes to it, we need, it's the middle where everything gets solved, right?
Yeah.
Like there, there's good ideas on, there's good points perhaps on both ends of the spectrum that get completely lost with, with the garbage rhetoric and the, the inflaming and gaslighting, frankly. Both are gaslighting.
Totally.
Right? And there's no solutions to any of it.
No.
All it does is keep people further away and entrenched in their camp.
And, and to suggest that the, this incoming counselors would support that, like, that's just, like, that's, um, that's defamation. Like you're, you can't, that's just not accurate. You know, we ha- so much of council's job is the, you know, almost half of the city of Victoria's budget is for Vic PD.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, like that, that's, we can't think that way as counselors, right?
No, well, and we're not gonna change the pattern either. Like, I agree. Like, we're also talking unprecedented times. We just went through a global pandemic, like once in a hundred year. And the significant, like the worry and stress for everybody in the population was affected by it. I don't think there's anybody, some people prospered from it, majority of people had some sort of mental health crisis or mental health impact. Um, and then the, the people in the, in the worst scenarios where the people that fall into homelessness, which there's a ton that is a direct result of COVID, did fall into homelessness.
Absolutely, I know them.
And then you're basically just, everybody's throwing money everywhere, but nobody's throwing money where it needs to support the people at the bottom. Like we're not, like I, I judge a society based on how, how the people in the, in the lowest elements as far as um, socioeconomic, um, housing, all that, how are they living? You know, like, um, America's saying they're the greatest, but, you know, they jail, you know, disproportionate amount of their population, there's a disproportionate amount of their population living on the street and living in poverty. Um, and they say they're the greatest nation in the world. I call bullshit because I want to look at how the people at the bottom are living. And that, I judge that, I mean, Singapore, prime example, they, I, from what I understand, there's almost no homeless population. They deal with other issues, maybe, maybe over constrained government and maybe some privacy things, but I, how do you think?
Well, their house, well, Singapore is interesting that you mentioned that because that's the example that the Greater Victoria Chamber of Commerce uses about the right to housing, because eighty percent of their housing is social housing.
Yeah.
It's like five percent in Canada.
Eighty percent.
Yeah, isn't that crazy?
But it hasn't, historically, it hasn't always been five percent though, right?
They, well, they had to do that for the same reasons that we're having, right? Like, um, being able to, to maintain a strong economy, we need workers, right? We need lower wage workers and those people need a place to live.
So how long ago did they begin that kind of policy? Has that been going on for a couple of generations or a couple of decades?
That's a good question that I do not know the answer to, but I could look it up for you.
Well, I, I, I think it's a great solution, but it's, it's like, it's like planting trees. When's the best time to do it? It was like twenty-five years ago.
Yeah, and we.
When's next best time is right now.
Exactly.
Right now.
And, and what we were talking about, like for, for the hospitality industry, the kinds of, of supports that the hospitality industry needs. And part of that is housing too, right?
It sure is.
Oh, for sure.
Like, if we can't provide, um, affordable housing for those, like even the living wage, right? What does that look like? Twenty percent of the people in Victoria are in core housing need.
Core housing need, is that just?
So it's spending fifty percent or, or more of your income on housing.
Wow.
Yeah.
And of that twenty percent, thirty percent are seniors.
Well, and that's, number's gonna grow.
Yeah, and in the next.
Demographically, right?
In the next twenty years, we are, our senior population is gonna double. So.
But that, and that's.
You know, we, we just need diversity of housing and we need.
Let's get into, let's get into the bitsy metal component of this now.
And Sam, do, do, Kalen and I just go off.
I know, you guys.
Like, we just aren't even giving you an inch.
Okay.
What do you guys say? Sound good?
Sounds good. What do you, what do you wanna?
Sam, what do you want to talk about?
Well, I, I think I'd be remiss to not bring up, because you are running for council and it's a really timely issue. Um, what are your feelings about the amalgamation of the police force? For Victoria, Squamult and all the surrounding areas? I mean, right now, I know the Squamult is, is, um, saying they don't want to be part of it anymore, that it causes issues. And I, I'm wondering what your opinion on that is.
Well, I think, looking at it from, again, it's a regional thing, it's a, it's a regio-regional issue, it's the same around, um, homelessness, because Victoria has the core. You know, and we deal with, everybody comes down here to party and whoop it up and, you know,
Yeah.
Get into trouble.
Well, that's where service providers go to.
And, and it's, and it's not just, it's not just the, you know, the, the housing and the mental health needs, it's just people coming down here from the region that use the core and it overtaxes our police force and our police force is telling us that.
Yeah.
So I've heard about, there was, I heard about a, a possible amalgamation between Victoria and Sanich Police. And, and the possible amalgamation between our two municipalities. I think that makes sense.
I, I, I'm gonna agree with you, right, right on public here on that one. I, I, I think it makes sense because, I mean, look at their population and their geography is, we're so small.
Yeah.
And why do we have five different, or whatever we have, police forces?
Yeah, so either we go regional. for the whole region or they're separate or, you know, and then I'm kind of contradicting myself here because there is that possibility of Victoria and Sanich amalgamating and maybe amalgamating the the mayor and council too. Like, do we need
Yeah.
Two mayors? Do we need?
Well, there's, we've got, I mean, you've got View Royal, you've got Callwood, you've got Langford, you've got Victoria, you've got Sanich, all within, you know, a pretty short radius or small radius, I guess. So there's a lot of duplication and a lot of lack of coordination.
And I think that's part of the problem with with a lot of these issues. And again, I already mentioned this once, but with twenty five percent of our police force with PTSD, like the situation that happened in Sanich, like it's really hard on police officers. And we need to support that by building the housing, getting the mental health supports in place. And this isn't an overnight fix. Like, this is going to be a transition, but we have to stop just putting the topical ointment on the situation. We need to get into the roots.
Yeah.
And work it out from the roots. And it's gonna take time. But we we need to start thinking that way and it has to be as a region.
And we have to start. I like what you're saying.
We have to start that.
Well, we need to start the surgery. I mean, we've been diagnosing and talking and circulating money around the problem. It's time to, because I I don't think it's a money problem, to be honest.
It's not a money problem.
It's an allocation.
You've got lots of money.
I've talked to leaders, I've talked to, you know, provincial leaders about this. It's not an issue of money. It's an issue of political will.
What's, what's so, what's, what's the political issue with helping people? I don't get it. Why, why is, why is helping people?
Like, think about it. Think, think about, like, this idea, because, I mean, I'm gonna go on a bit of a tangent here too. Like, you hear all these conspiracy theories and all this crap. Nobody can organize themselves on a global scale to figure it out ever. It's never happened in the history of the world. You have all these different countries, but yeah, there's this conspiracy theories that there's a deep state that is organizing and puppeteering all this stuff and it's all manipulation and we're getting controlled. It's all BS. The reality of it is, everything happens regionally, everything happens locally and nobody can agree on anything. Like, even in our own organization, we, like, we spend hours meeting and debating every decision and things like that. And it's paralysis by analysis, right? And that is literally where it all comes down to. Is, and you've got these four-year terms, right? So people are dealing with the agenda, whatever the hot topic is now, like right now in Victoria, the missing middle.
Yeah, we can talk about that if you want.
Literally, like, going to war over missing middle. And this policy in a general is gonna take thirty, you want to talk about Singapore? Missing middle to make any meaningful change will happen over the next thirty or forty years. We really need to be considering missing middle, of course. Like, for me, I have, luckily, I've been in the capital regional district for over thirty years. I've been in different levels of business. I've owned and I've done the small developments and things like that. I had a triplex and I was in a duplex and triplex zoned area. And somebody, and there's also single family dwellings in there. It was on Princess. And it was
Sorry, triplex zone?
No, duplex zone, duplex zone.
No triplex, yeah.
Yeah, there's no triplex zone, but duplex zone. But there was a non-conforming um, triplexes in there. So they're zoned duplex by running as a triplex, right?
You rogue, you.
Well,
Just kidding.
I, when we bought this house, we were like, oh, wow, this is three units. It's separated.
Oh, okay, you bought it that way. All right, okay.
Yeah, so I bought, but it was zoned, somebody downzoned it to single family dwelling.
Okay.
Right? So it was duplex. They brought it, downzoned it to single family dwelling. The people that owned the house, I think they'd owned it for ten years prior to us buying it. And this was in two thousand and eight. They were running as a single family. I'm like, wow, well, we can rent this suite out. We can, you know, and we we owned it. Uh, Joe and I lived on the top floor. Pete lived on the main floor and we rented out the the basement. But we're non-conforming. It was, we're operating it illegally, effectively, in the city based on the
You were breaking the bylaws. If anybody complained about you.
And we're, that particular property was already on the list because I, as a citizen, doing my due diligence before we bought it, I went to the city and said, is, what is this zone for? I brought up the building card. And it had been a duplex, I don't know, twenty years earlier. And then somebody, I guess maybe for tax purposes or whatever, downzoned it to to single fam, went through the trouble of making it a single family, um, home again.
Okay.
Right? So it was illegal, like us operating it the way we're planning to operate it was illegal technically to the bylaw. You needed off-street parking and then you need all the stuff. And I said, well, what is the reality of somebody coming and knocking on our door and shutting us down? They said, well, we're not really actively enforcing these things. You're on a list. Maybe at some point in the future, somebody may come. Like, they, my impression was it wasn't that big a deal. But my feeling is that there it's not necessarily that we don't have enough houses per se. There's a ton of houses that are big enough to be triplexed, you know, or fourplexed or duplexed or any of these types of things. And there, people are living in them as a single family house because they're afraid of doing anything that doesn't conform with the existing bylaws.
Right.
Which I think is fair enough, but how do we loosen that up? Because that is something I think we could do very quickly as a city council in providing, within our current existing zoning, a lot more inventory and or uh, presenting a possibility for people that have been considering, you know, getting their suite back up or running their house as a suite or giving them uh, extra income that way. Is that a, can we, is there stuff in our existing zoning? Or if you're gonna do a renovation, adding extra living space to your house? Right?
We can build, we can build garden suites.
But garden suites is is sometimes modification and renovations is cheaper than than building, you know, a garden suite is between a hundred and two hundred thousand to build.
Yeah.
Right? So there is, there's also an economic barrier to that. The zoning itself, like, for example, in my, in that case in two thousand and eight, if they just said, yeah, you can run this as a, and maybe it means our property taxes go up, but that's, that's fine. But we'd be allowed to do it.
Well, I think you can change the inside of a house if it's heritage status. So what you're saying is just for any house
Any house.
To turn it into
If it's, if it's capable.
If it's capable, so that's
There, you also have the provincial building code to deal with because there's fire separations, things like that. But if it's already modified or the modifications are easily done, why would we not just let that happen? Now, and just remove that barrier? Because that barrier still exists, exists in the single family dwelling component of two. There's a ton of non-conforming suites, a ton.
I think you'd still have to change the zoning, though. Which is what they're talking, well, it would, because we are not zoned.
Well, the missing middle is like a blanket up, upzoning, right?
But that's for new builds. So it's, it's so that new builds don't have to, you know this, but for new builds don't have to go through the the quite extensive and expensive rezoning process.
So when we're talking about the missing middle, we're talking about multifamily housing, not, not just an apartment block and not
No, they're more like fourplexes and triplexes and and things like that.
Up to six mid-block, it's up to six units mid-block depending on the lot size. And townhouses on the corners, corner lots, up to twelve townhouses on corner lots, corner lots can be up to three stories, mid-block, two and a half stories. Um, so it's building more of that in between an apartment or a condo and a new single family home. And yeah, it, I mean, forty eight percent of us live alone in Victoria.
Wow, Victoria, the lonely city.
The lonely city.
I didn't know that.
You know what? And it's seniors.
Senior, I was
It's seniors, that, and I'm really concerned about seniors. I'm hearing a lot about that on the doorstep. And the average family size is one point eight people. So we need to be building what our demographics require. So we make it, the easiest form of housing to build is a single family home, which is the most expensive. And it's not what we need. It's not what our demographics need. So that's why they've introduced the missing middle. And the 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 theory, what it's supposed to do is it's supposed to look like a single family home and fit in to to be sensitive to the to the character of a neighborhood, but be four or six units.
But that's, that's a demo, right? So that's a demolition component. So the person is gonna tear down their house and build a new house.
Sell your house to begin with, so.
Yeah, you'd be selling your house. If you're not developing it yourself, you're selling it to a a small developer. Like, big developers don't touch this, this stuff.
Big developers aren't gonna touch this at all.
Well, the majority of money made in development is in rezoning. That's where the land lift comes.
Yeah.
So that's where they make the bulk of their money. They're not making their money on hammering sticks together and building the actual unit. They're making it on the lift of of the land. That's where, from what I understand, knowing several developers in town, um, both midsize and big developers, um, that's where, you know, the rezoning applications and the onerous time that that takes now. Um, and I think the missing middle policy slows, quickens that process for those midsize type develop, or small to medium sized developments.
Because nobody, if you, if you have to rezone a piece of property, it takes like minimum nine months or probably more. And it's expensive and it's not, it's not, um, secure. You could still, your application can still be turned down because it has to go through public hearing, it has to go through council. It takes a ton of staff time, like the taxpayer money spent on the staff time to process that, council time to go through all of that, that if you're building, you know, a big apartment block, then you're gonna do that because it kind of makes sense financially, if you need to rezone. But for four, six units, it just doesn't make financial sense. People aren't gonna take that risk. That small builder that's doing those aren't gonna take that risk. So that's where the
Well, with rising interest rates too, that's a component. There's a lot of, I mean.
And so the missing middle has been in our official community plan for, it's, it's part of that. It's part of where we're going. It's, it's seemingly something new, but it it has, it's, it's in there.
So if it's part of the official plan for this, for Victoria, then why, why, why does it appear that there are so many obstacles to get there?
Because people are opposed to it.
Then how did it get into the plan to begin with?
It's as part of, it's part of the strategy.
It's the long-term strategy. It's not in the official city plan.
So the official community pa- plan spans over thirty years. It's a strategy and it's reviewed every year, where are we at? But it's the, it's the it's the plan that we're, that we're, that we're following. And so it's, this is an idea of how we can get more of these different housing options on the market and built on the market so that we're not just building apartments and single family homes, we're also building townhouses. Or, you know, like, the best actually way to explain it is row housing. Row housing, as we know, is, what, we've been doing it for a couple hundred years in Europe and North America and it's the classic building for working class, single family dwelling, working class, single family dwelling. And it's cheaper.
In Canada, that have been built, and they were, they were building them like wildfire back in the fifties, sixties and seventies.
Yeah, we have them here. I mean, Lojo, I was just looking at a picture of Lojo and I'm like, that's row housing, you know, it's all, like, we, we have it here. And it could be on our corridors, like, you know, Bay Street with brownstones. It can look cool, you know, and it can, it can add, actually add to the character of our city.
But those, again, are long term. Like, we're talking about, because we've got, we've got construction supply, we've got, um, problems, we've got because, primarily because of labor, we've got a rising interest rate environment, which isn't conducive to to building or conducive to building. All those things. I think there's things that we could do within our current bylaws that could help that maybe isn't being looked at.
Sure, I mean, I, I'll, the, so the idea of newer homes being subdivided. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to get back to you on that, but I will look into that.
Yeah.
I'll ask, I'll ask.
I think there's, there is a inclusionary housing policy that the city council adopted in twenty nineteen that requires twenty percent of units and buildings over sixty to be affordable. And basically, a developer friend of mine's position on it is that it literally killed that, that building of sixty unit or above residential properties because they have to allocate twenty percent of it to low income versus his position is, why not just take the dollar value, like today's dollar? Because the other thing that happens in that is everything gets inflated as you're building it. So it costs more to to finish the project than it would cost if you just charged them a fee to go into a pool, which then that pool then actually builds purpose-built co-op housing and low income housing.
So incentivize it rather than require it.
Because economics don't play out if you have to take twenty percent, like, and this is just an economics thing. Things change. And because of the inflation, like, when they rezone it and they're there, all of their properties are inflating. So they're being penal, I guess penalized for taking the risk to build that unit. And it's not as effective as if you just took that money at the day one, the application stage. Here's what the value of the property is, here's what twenty percent, and here's what that dollar value is, and maybe it's a hundred grand or maybe it's two hundred grand or whatever. And it goes into a pool of funds. Uh, maybe it's managed by B C Housing or what have you, then they're using that to then leverage to get um, more provincial and federal funding to match, which will then free them up to buy land in areas that can be developed for purpose built.
That can go to the rapid deployment of affordable housing, which we have already, which the council passed that in the spring unanimously, by the way.
Yeah.
Sometimes our city council all does agree on things.
Yeah.
And, um, so that, that means that affordable housing, so non-market government, co-op housing doesn't have to go through the rezoning process. Right? This is the same thing as missing middle, but it's just for, it's not for the town, let's just call it town, row housing. Let's just call it row housing. It's not for the row houses. It's for the, like, government funded.
Which we need, which we need more.
A ton of that.
And but I think the private sector, and I, I think the spirit of them saying, okay, twenty percent has to be below market housing in order for you to get a permit in the city to build these things. And the result was, nobody built them.
Right.
Okay. So they're not building them. And so I could argue that it's probably because of this or a component of it, which makes it unaffordable to build.
I'll take that question away with me as well. And then we can put it in the comments when we put this out. But I do know that last year we built more purpose-built rentals than strata.
But who owned it?
But it wasn't for low income.
Was it like a big REIT that came in?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That then, there is no, there is no component or expectation that they're gonna be building community amenities.
Right.
There's a fund that goes in, but where are the, where are the parks? Where's the, you know, and the downtown, frankly, and I know this because I own a business on Yates Street. There's no sunlight. Like, you just build, because they build to the max because of height restrictions.
Yeah.
They build to the max. They put money into a, a place making sort of fund that they have to do. But where is this place making being done? Like, where is the parks being built? Where is, where is this stuff happening?
So we, yeah, like, we built thirteen hundred almost units last year, but almost seventy percent of them went in downtown. Right? Now things being built in the the single family zoned area, right?
In the community where people want to live.
Yeah, and where we want to have, like, so that, you know, the vision you're talking about earlier, you know, my vision for Victoria is, you know, it's a city of communities. So we have each neighborhood has their own village hub. Yeah, Fernwood Square is coming along. I was just, um, I was just over in Oakland's, they call it the Fernwood Makers Party, but it's, you know, the Hal Tane Corners, right? Like, there's, there's development opportunities there to turn that into a center. So people are fifteen minutes away from their fresh fruit and veg and locally made clothes or, you know, just any kind of services in that, in that area. And that's what we need to do so we can get out of our cars. It's important for climate change. Um, we, the building out isn't the way to go. We do
Sprawl doesn't, sprawl doesn't work.
Doesn't work.
And it's not, it's definitely not an environmental policy.
Yeah, and if we had, if we had a bit more density around the corridors and around these villages, then we can, we can do more, um, transit, like public transit. If we have the numbers to support it, we can improve the transit system.
Right.
So we need to, we need to see that in our neighborhoods. So, you know, there are changes that we have to make, but you know, maybe we do need to take a breath in Victoria. Maybe things, there's been too much change happening too quickly.
Well, I think that, and that's part of, um, I would think, and hopefully we'll have Lisa Helps on to talk a little bit about her tenure. And, I mean, she's renownedly beat up by pundits on, online and, you know, highly criticized, but she's one vote on the council. She does set the agenda, but I do think that there is, um, you know, and in full disclosure, I, I supported Stephen Andrew and his council run a few years ago, just to bring a little bit of diversity on the council. And this is kind of what I was talking about at the beginning, is just having a diverse set of views, but people that have relevant experiences that could actually add informed discussion to it. discussion to it, uh, is needed, but we also went through a global pandemic, right? I mean, we had the Johnson, Johnson Street Bridge, kind of like, you know, over budget, you know, huge thing in the first term of Lisa's term, and then the bike lanes, which is very polarizing and you know, I think there's modifications that can be made to improve it. Um, I do like the fact that there is, um, some protected bike lanes in our city. I think this is just the modern world we live in and, you know, if we can then add that community component where people can live and work in the community they live and they don't need to be traveling vast distances and, but there's enough housing to employ the people that need housing at a, at a reasonable um, affordability. I think all those things just make the community better. But until we can get to the point where we're actually just talking and hearing each other instead of shouting and screaming. Done shouting and screaming, Sam.
I, I, I was done through the pandemic. I was a great screamer and a great shouter before the pandemic.
Yeah.
And I just, I've toned myself right down.
No, it's good.
Yeah.
We do need, we need to heal the, the division. It's not healthy for our, our city.
It's not getting anything done.
Well, let's start, let's start by listening.
And it's keeping people.
Less talking.
Yeah, it's keeping people riled up, so it's not healthy for us as individuals. And it doesn't make us move forward in a, in a good direction that we need to move in.
Right. So moving forward, um, once you're on council.
Oh, I've earned your vote.
Well, there, there, there's more than one vote. I, I'm, I'm going to withhold my, uh, my vote.
I had to just, you opened the door and I walked in.
You walked in.
It, it was my body stance. I was open, right?
Yes.
So what would be the first couple of things that you would want to see addressed? Not that you were going to address, but because I know you're, you would be only one voice on council, but what would you like to see council look? Look to do first?
Well, I think we really need to address the, the housing crisis and some of these issues that we've talked about here because it, it does affect our economy and we need to keep workers here in Victoria and we can't have our youth moving away because there's no hope. You know, I spoke to a guy who, who has an apartment downtown with his partner. Um, one of them's in tech, one of them works for the government and, you know, they're two hundred dollars away from not paying their bills.
Wow. Right? Those are solid jobs.
So there is no way that he can, um, save to, you know, hit the stress test to get a mortgage and there, there's no hope. The only thing he's counting on, and this is really depressing for him, is that when his parents pass, then with his inheritance, he can buy, you know, that's the kind of state that our mid-thirty year olds are, are looking at.
My kids have been looking at that since they were old enough to say inheritance.
He's got food casters, just in case he's being poisoned.
Like it's, that's tough and both, so this person and his partner, their parents both live in Victoria, so they want those, like we're, we have to look at our, like, you know, my parents, I'm fifty-one, so my parents, you know, aging in place, we're going to have to look that way, especially with our seniors doubling. And we don't want to separate families. We need that intergenerational support because again, like the healthcare system. So housing, I think really is like the, it is the number one issue that we have to look at here. So and it's going to depend. We're going to know on September first whether missing middle passes or not, but as Kayla pointed out, is that, that that's not going to build enough housing right away? So we're going to have to look at, at other things and maybe this idea of all houses being able to be renovated into more than one.
Or just being allowed to run as they're built.
Run, yeah, or just to, 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 to take a look at, at those, those kinds of things.
The low hanging fruit.
The low hanging fruit, like motions that we could pass quickly to make a difference right away. I would be looking at that. Um, and some solutions around, around, um, public safety, homelessness, whatever you choose to call it.
Yeah.
Um, what we can do with that and I'm all, I'm doing that whether I'm elected or not.
Right.
Well, that's your day job.
I can see that.
That's what I do. That's what I do. So, um, I'll tell you what I am doing in September. So nine forty Caledonia is a film about the flood in Central Park encampment. Everyone was moved to a parking lot. It was sanctioned by the city and it was actually a relatively successful for what we have seen as models work for emergency situations for the unhoused. I do not believe that people should be camping in parks. I think they need, there needs to be designated spaces on hardscapes where we're, where we're hitting the bottom rung of Maslow because right now we're not even hitting bottom rung of Maslow in terms of human hierarchy of needs and you can't go from one level to the next without it. So food, shelter, security.
Well, and I'm going to go out on a limb and predict that the situation as bad as it was during COVID. We still will see events that will cause it to be as bad as it was in COVID or worse. The homeless population is growing and it depends, and it's tied into the economy.
Do we have those numbers? I mean, I, I, I don't know if we have the numbers that, that homelessness got worse in COVID? Is that?
It seemed to because we're seeing it all over.
Well, I guess it depends on what your barometer is, right? Like, you know, visibly we're witnessing you know, people living on the street in encampments and that wasn't the key, that maybe, maybe they're more were living rough and now they're living in like emergency situation. I don't know.
Well, because we bought all the hotels. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but in some ways we're ahead of other places in Canada because like the national two weeks ago, there was a story about the encampment crisis in Canada, like what happened in the downtown east side, what's happened in Toronto, like police coming in and just moving people and moving them because of fire hazards and things like, you know, safe, like moving them.
This morning, there was a big fire in Vancouver this morning.
So it's because of these safety issues, right? Like so, so something needs to happen, but when we're just rearranging the deck chairs on the Titanic, we're not, we're not solving anything. So
We're not moving forward.
So I'm going to take nine forty Caledonia and I'm going to screen it for, um, the provincial government in September.
Great.
And so
Well, that's the beauty of filmmaking is it does change hearts and minds.
It, it helps and, and maybe we have some real solutions there. Um, based on the experiences that we've witnessed, like there, there, there is something there. There is something to having a sanctioned space that had a fence around it, had a twenty-four seven security guard, it had a warming tent. There was a service provider there seven days a week, eight hours a day. The, there were very few police calls. I can get the data on that. It was easier for bylaw. They didn't have to, you know, be making sure people are in compliance every day. And then it's easier on the people not to have to be like knowing their, you know, what compliance is for them and they don't have to worry about their stuff being taken, that they're safe there. Um, and also there was some stipends for cleaning and things like that. So some incentives, you know, for cleaning and that really helped.
Built confidence and.
And to the idea, the, the lead character, the, one of the main, yeah, pride of ownership of creating your own space and, um, and having handups, you know, so creating like some sort of job opportunities or ways for people to make some money and to feel like they're part of the community. It changed lives. Like it, 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 it changed the, there's one, um, person in the film who said, you know, I just didn't know people were still like this. Like he was talking about all the support that they got from, from the neighborhood association and the coalition and he, it made him want to give back to the community. It changed his perspective living in that encampment and he had been, he was, um, in construction, had his own business and just couldn't make enough to pay the rent and ended up in a tent.
Wow.
And now he's working for, for a service provider, actually. He's giving, like, isn't that?
When, when, when I hear the word encampment, the first thing I, I, and I'm going to play devil's advocate here just because.
Don't do any, we're winding down the show. Don't create any frigging tornadoes through this.
Say encampment, it, it, uh, I don't know. I'm sure there's real positive aspects like you, you said, but for those people who would say an encampment is just an enclosure to hold people.
Yeah.
What, and, and some people would put a real negative spin on that. There, but you're saying there's real positivity that's coming out of that. So I, I don't want to focus on negative.
I shouldn't actually be calling it any, like, it's not an encampment, like everyone's just rogue and lawless in the park, right? There's some order, there's some structure and I would like to actually.
Tent city.
No, I would actually, no, it wasn't a tent city. There was order, there was structure, there was um, people, you know, standing up in their community and there was, there was a change. There's, you know, the warming tent went up and smiles came back onto people's faces, like, you know, these people went through a flood, a gale force windstorm and a snowstorm. And then at the end of the spring, they were moved into the arena. Like they went through a, a lot. So, but what I'm actually talking about, I, I want to be very careful because this isn't, it's just, it's ideas. I'm, I'm going to be brainstorming with people at the province. Again, whether I'm elected or not, it's not like we're going to implement these things, but I think we need to talk about more tiny towns regionally, for instance, right? The shipping container village or, or small micro villages, like less than twelve people with with these Conestoga, with, with, with the wraparound services and the Conestoga huts that we built. We built these sixty square foot Conestoga huts. They look like a wagon. There's a steel door with a deadbolt lock and it's a bed you can sleep. So we, we um, housed someone who was sleeping on government street um, for two, well, we didn't house him, we sheltered him for two months in one of those huts and he needed support. I'm not going to sugarcoat it. Like there was, and I actually did a lot of that work. But, and he also brought a ton to the table, but he went to detox, nailed it, stabilization, nailed it. I actually just saw on Facebook this morning, he's six months sober.
Oh, my God. Okay, okay. There's another example of taking one person off the street.
Our place work program. So he's back in school. Like he's flying.
Yeah, that's amazing. Like, I didn't know that last bit, but.
Yeah. So I haven't, I haven't updated you on that. So, I mean, so if we could have these huts, but right now we have a, a show hut that's in the back parking lot of the Shelburne Street Church and there's somebody sleeping on the deck of it with a, with a tart. Like it's just like, because it, we, we're not zoned for it.
Well, and listen, this whole endeavor was just, I mean, it was myself, it was you.
It was me losing my mind. Like there's not enough shelter spaces.
Um, Matt Dell, Jeremy.
Caradona, yeah.
Caradona, Rob Reed.
Rob Reed, yep.
And the Big Wheel Community Foundation kind of came together and we fundraised, the community foundation bought one and, uh, we did a a crowdfunding for the other.
We actually doubled, we doubled the money. So we were, we're crowdfunding for one and so many people were supportive of it that we made enough to build two. So we did.
Yeah. So we've done that, but it's not like we're qualified to be running these things or doing this, but it's an example of citizens, and I'm not tooting our horn. I, like, I'm most proud of what you just said. Right? Because the whole point is about dealing with someone who's living in a stairway.
Who, yeah, he went from sleeping on the street. When he, the first few nights that he slept in the hut, I was getting messages from him. I've never slept better in my life.
Yeah.
Like it's sleep.
And those, to put it in perspective.
Yes.
Not worrying about being kicked through a tent.
And your things taken from you or stolen from you, like you're just never, you're always.
Safe. You got a locked door. But to put it in context, you can build these things for five grand, right? Like I think our, you know, yeah, it's around five thousand. It's between four thousand and seven thousand, depending on who's building it, but.
Hard costs were thirty-five hundred.
Yes. And then the, the labor component of it, right? So if we could get volunteer labor, um, you're looking at around four grand to build these Conestoga huts that will house temporarily shelter, um, one individual, right? So.
But you could have little villages, right? So micro villages that, that has a support piece. There's a porta potty, there's water. And we were proposing it on church parking lots because that's always the thing is where are these going to go?
Walmart parking, yeah, church parking lot, Walmart parking lots, casino parking lots.
Parking lots out of, out of the parks. The parks are for public use and it just upsets everyone too much and it just
But it's, and it's not a solution.
Work. It's not a solution. It's been, there's just been Band-Aid on top of Band-Aid on top of Band-Aid. You know, but two thousand and eight, people weren't even allowed to sleep in, to put up a structure too. So it was the right to sleep that the homeless won. And then it became, okay, sure, you can set up a tent, but only half the day. You can't, it to not create encampments, right? So that's just been business as usual, but that's, you can't get your life back together when you're carrying your tent around half the day and
No address.
We're not, we're just, we just need to do better and it doesn't take all that much. It's not that complicated.
It takes good people with good ideas and heart and
Yeah.
and actually doing, not just talking. It sounds like you've been doing this for at least fifteen years.
Well, it's my, it's, this is, this is my day job.
Yeah.
Right? So.
Well, okay, let's, I just want to end, like, obviously there, we could talk about this for, forever.
I have seventeen more questions.
Okay, you're going to have to put it in writing.
Hey, just a minute. Should we do a part two and I'll bring Karen?
Maybe. Yes.
That, that's a great idea.
For sure.
Or one of my other ones.
But I want to punctuate the, our point, or my point, I want to have our listeners understand is in multiple examples that we talked about, Karen is one of them. Um, the person that we housed in the Conestoga, um,
Yeah, I'm not going to name his name.
No, of course not, but it doesn't, it, it, yeah, we don't need to name his name to credit the result.
Right. Yes.
And this is the point, the point of, you know, multiple people who get this, like real support, compassionate support, um, and the result. So he's six months sober. I mean, this is a person that had who knows how long it would have taken him to get that point. But he was not doing it on his own. He was living on the street for
He would have still been on government.
He'd still be on government street, living in a doorway.
Government street right now.
And now he's in a treatment program. He's on a, a work program.
Couldn't move. He was, he was, he's in checkmate by the system. Right? Because he can't leave his things because they all get stolen. So he doesn't, or it will get taken.
Of course, but, and those are, but we're talking about, this is, let's not talk about get mired in, in all the details that we know. It's traumatic to be living on the street, but there is a solution because we've proven that it can be done.
Yeah.
Right? And, and we're just a bunch of community minded folks
Yeah.
that put this thing together in this one case.
Yeah.
You've been working on it for, you know, fifteen years and there's examples of, of how it can work to get people from living on the street to actually in productive part of society where they're actually feeling safe and proud and, you know, I imagine he is super proud of where he's at today.
Well, he posted a picture of himself. He's like, I'm six months sober, but now I need to go to the gym. He's got this belly.
Which is awesome. Yeah. I mean, that's where the normal life should be. So I think that, to me, I want to leave that.
And, and also just, and I just want to say one more thing. And all, the other part of this is we do need to, to protect businesses, especially local businesses. And government street and the downtown businesses are hammered the most by this. And so it's, it's not just about doing the right thing or, you know, it's more economically sound. It's for our economy. It's for our community. It's for, you know, a healthy place for all of us to be and we, and we do need to support the, and the hospitality industry is impacted by that because there's so many restaurants and coffee shops.
Larger employers in the province.
We need this, it's, it all interconnects.
It does. We're all made of the same stuff.
Yeah. So that was really quite, how long did we talk for? That was a while.
We've, we've been going for two hours now and, um,
This was our longest podcast we've ever done.
I think so.
Of course.
But most, most interesting.
Yep.
In my mind.
Really? Most interesting podcast?
Well, so thanks for being here.
But this was great up there.
Well, if you wanted to follow up, like, I mean.
How, how do we find more about your platform and how do we find out how to vote for you?
Okay, so website, Krista with a K, Loughton, like Broughton with an L dot C A. And my priorities are there, which are a city of communities, like what we talked about. Um, housing and affordability, mental health, addiction and homelessness. And I'll be releasing a full platform, probably just after Labor Day with, with more headings and more bullets and but, um, housing, I mean, if we, if I was, if you were to say, what is your, you know, when you're elected, what are you going to focus on? You know, that when we're creating the strategic plan for our term, it like housing, I mean, we just have to, it's the hub and then um, you know, focusing on our economy and all of what we just talked about intertwines with that. We need to, we need to, to fix the complex issues.
Can you donate? Can you donate on your site?
Yes, please do. Please do. Actually, I have this little fundraiser. Oh, it's, it'll be over by the time this comes on, but I'm trying to get a hundred people to donate twenty-five dollars for my signs. Cause I need twenty-five hundred bucks to put my, to get all my signs printed up and have my name all over the city. So that's on right now. But yeah, there's a donate button on the website.
Awesome.
Excellent. Well, good luck to you.
And you, and to pledge to vote, um, that'll be on there too. That really helps too, so that I can, you know, have a database of, of supporters and I know kind of where I'm at as, as I'm moving forward, you know, with the big campaign time.
Awesome. Well, this is going to come out right around campaign time. So um, good luck crossing the finish line.
Okay.
I hope it goes really well for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, sure. Great to meet you.
Yeah, and the, the, what we talked about before we started about supporting the hospitality industry with um, you know, wage subsidies or those sort of things like that is something I could take to the province too. We can't do that as, at the city. But you know, it is, we can be cheerleaders for the province to just go, hey, we need this and, and here are some ideas because local business matters so much to me. I'm an entrepreneur. I get it.
Right. Yeah.
Music to our ears. Bravo.
Yes, thank you very much.
And I like coffee and I like burgers and you guys are pretty cool. So.
I like movies.
Okay.
And I also like helping people.
Listen, we'll send you a clip of us and them and you can, not a clip, maybe.
I wonder if I should do a public screening of us and them during the campaign time, you know, my, yeah. I think I better do that and I'll just let you know when it's happening.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
I love it. Thank you, Krista. Good luck.
Thank you, Kalen.
And well, we, we talk regularly, so I'll talk to you soon.
Kalen's my cheerleader.
Well, I just hope that I get to talk to you soon too.
You're going to.
Okay, there you go. Well, it was great having you on board here. Thanks so much.
We can even go to a local pub and continue.
Yeah, continue the dialogue.
Well, yeah. Well, that's how solutions get uh, brought to the surface, right?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. We need to, like it's, it's enough's enough. Enough is enough. There are things that just need to change and we need to think differently. Business as usual is not going to change things. We need to.
No.
We need new ways, new paths, smart paths, well-thought-out paths forward.
And low-hanging fruit paths.
And people who are prepared to just do it.
Roll up your sleeves. Let's go.
Yeah.
They're rolled.
All right, you're there. I'm wearing short sleeves. Okay, perfect. We're ready.
Forearm showing. Let's go, uh, let's go pump them up.
We're ready.
I love it, you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Bye.
That's our show, everybody. Bread and Butter Collective. If you check out our website, bread and collect butter collective dot com. You can, we'll also be playing all of our member um, hospitality businesses. So go support them.
Yeah, go support all those people with great values.
Yes, good values. Let's go.
Kalen, thanks for being here today. It was another great Monday.
Be kind.
Be nice.
Be safe.
Okay.
Bread and Butter Collective's membership includes the following local businesses. Two Percent Jazz, Nine Hundred Degrees Wood Fired Pizzeria, Agrius, Big Wheel Burger, Blue Mountain Solutions, Bodega Tappas Wine Bar, Brentwood Bay Village Emporium, Norwich and Charlotte the Quail, Victoria Chocolate and Company, Drum Roaster Coffee, Habbit Coffee, Foo Asian Street Food, The Culinary Arts Program at Camosan, Cafe Fantastico, Fall Epi, Harold Street Brew Works, Hay Happy, House of Boatang, Hoyn Brewing, Jenny Marie's Cracker Company, La Pasta, La Rue Patisserie, Mocha House, Pardon Parcel, Poco a Pinto Bar, Pizzeria Prima Strada, Rain Dogs, Roast, Table Nine Consulting, Sherwood Cafe and Bar, Sweets by Selena, The Collective Wine Bar and Kitchen, The Drake, Tapa Bar, Taco Stand Al Pastor, Tuuk, The Whole Beast, The Winery and Zambres.
To hear more from the Bread and Butter Collective, go to checknews.ca/podcasts on Check Plus or find us on your favorite podcasting platform.